Patient work session, August 10th, 2020. My name is Katrina Ruggles. I am the Vice President of the Board. I am standing in for Dr. Johnson, who could not be with us today. And let's get started with the first item on the agenda, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag.
Of the United States. And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
Stands.
One nation. Under.
Under God.
Indivisible. With liberty. And justice. For all.
For all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is, um, I don't want. Item 1.03, the roll call. Mr. Seymour, will you call the roll? Is he here?
They're on mute.
Oh.
This is Ruggles.
Here.
Mr. Verdi.
Present.
Dr. Cooper Letty.
Present.
Mr. McGowan.
Present.
And of course, Dr. Johnson is absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is an agenda item 2.01. I'm not really sure what that is for. Um, Brandy, Mr. Smith, can you give a little clarity on what item 2.01 is for?
That's usually if you have any particular board items that you wanted to bring forward.
Oh, okay.
Then you would list them there.
Okay. Well, at this point, we have not received anything from any of the other board members, um, nothing from Dr. Johnson prior to, um, her leaving. Um, so we'll move right on to the superintendent's report. And Mr. Smith, you have the floor with item 3.01.
Thank you, Madam Vice President and Board. The first item, uh, when we had our last session, July 24th, where the Board, uh, made the recommendation to, to, uh, make sure that we were in a virtual category. Please keep in mind, based on the, uh, information, you, you guys should have received a color-coded chart, um, with the four levels. Did you receive that?
Yes.
Okay. So when we were, when the Board made this decision, uh, to go into a virtual, uh, education plan, we were at level three. And many districts in Hamilton County, of course, all of my colleagues, all 26 districts were in the same level, level three. I am not making a recommendation to make a change from our virtual experience for at least the first five weeks, but I did send you a transition period for virtual blended board discussion, uh, dated today, uh, for our 6:30 meeting. And it reads, "If we stay in the orange category in Hamilton County and possibly move to yellow, it would seem likely for us to create a transition to a more comprehensive blended approach, beginning with preschool, kindergarten, and our students with disabilities at the end of five weeks. If successful without color changes or outbreaks, we consider a blended two-day per-week approach as proposed in the Blended Learning Plan. Students would begin the second." It should read, guys, that is a typo. It should read, "Second 10 weeks of blended." 10 weeks, not 16, because our quarters, our, uh, assessment periods go in weeks of five. Uh, so midterm is coming up as five. I ended the report for kids to receive their report card will be the next five and so on and so forth, so forth. So that is a conversation, that is open for conversation. Uh, and the question is, do we have to transition to level one, which I don't know if we've ever been in level one since the pandemic started, but do we need to transition to level one before there is a conversation about making some changes to the virtual plan, uh, as opposed to the blended plan? So right now, we're actually going very slow, and, and I, I agree with the Board. I think we should. Right now, the only people that are reporting is staff. Students are not reporting. And the parents told us loud and clear that the virtual experience that their kids were actually being part of was not working to their advantage. So what we wanted to do is bring teachers in so they could still collaborate, so we could actually have more eyes on making sure that we had a comprehensive plan as opposed to everybody being at home doing their own thing. And the teachers actually made a commitment, and I spoke about it today in convocation. Eighty percent of them said that they would do better being on campus as opposed to being at home. Because, let's face it, guys, they have their own distractions with their own children and vice versa. So that is a conversation that's on the table now for the Board to give me feedback and talk about direction. And again, uh, as of July 29th, no, I'm sorry, yeah, July 29th, I believe that we have transitioned into level two, which is, uh, increased exposure and spread exercise, high degree of caution, but there are two to three indicators that have been met, and these are all based on new cases per capita or sustained increase in new cases. So that's where we are.
Uh, my, my, I'm sorry, you want to go?
No, no, no. I was just saying it's open for discussion.
Okay, so the first thing I have is that, I, I know, um, Mr. Smith, you just said that 80% of the teachers felt that they, you know, should be onsite, but I remember the last conversation, we had two-thirds of them said they weren't comfortable being onsite.
No, sir. Not accurate. Based on the pie graph, it was 80% that said, "We went by the graph that we sent out in the survey, not an individual speaking for the Teachers Association. We went by the graph, which was an evidence-based situation, saying we had evidence that says 80% said that they prefer to be working onsite."
So the two-thirds were from the Teachers Association, but we have no way of verifying if that was correct?
Well, two, really, hey, this is, yeah, hey, I think two-thirds of the teachers said they weren't comfortable with the students in the class at the same time they were.
Yes, sir.
So I think 80% said they were comfortable coming in to school and do the teaching.
Right.
Oh, okay. So two, two separate things. Got it. Yeah, that, that's what I was.
Two separate things.
Okay, got it.
Thank you, Mr. Verdi and Mr. Smith for clarifying that. Um, yeah, um, I do recall it being that way, that they're comfortable with coming in the class, because if you recall, um, I asked the Teachers, um, Association, um, rep, um, to make sure, I wanted to make sure that I was clear that, based on what she was saying, that the teachers were expected to come in and they were okay, and she said yes.
Without students, right. Clarify, this is not only just teachers, but this is staff.
And staff, yes.
All right. So then moving to the second part, on what, on the question you asked, uh, me personally, would, I would feel more comfortable if we got to level one before we changed, transitioned, go into a blended type of learning. I'm not sure going to level two, just going down one level, if that's quite enough to now go to a blended. Um, when I read the alert, what it means about public emergency, I think if we got to level one, that would be ideal.
Please understand, we've never been to level one.
I got it. You're on mute, Dr. Cooper Letty.
Dr. Cooper Letty, did you want to say something?
Uh, no, I'm. I, I, I think the color code, which is orange right now, um, is one thing, and if it goes to level one, that's fine. Uh, I just don't think that I'm able to look ahead to talk about the, uh, spread in the community. And with 400,000 American children now with COVID, uh, I think we, I mean, I could say I'm comfortable with considering it at this point.
Doctor, you can, you, you mentioned 400,000 American children with, with COVID?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, mostly in the South, but, uh, we're just learning about this now. As of today, there's 400,000.
And, and, and I think, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Cooper Letty, were you finished?
Uh, so it, if, if what you're asking, can we plan for it? I think yes. Uh, but I think we're going to have to be looking at the data at the time we decide to pull the trigger.
I'd like to get the Boards and, um, Mr. Smith and Mr. Seymour's, um, thoughts on the fact that while there's data that's out there, there's national data, there's state data, there's local and regional data. The last data that I, I was hearing from, um, Governor Dewine is that Hamilton County was doing a great job in the fact that we have moved from red to, um, orange, um, indicating that we're going in the right direction as it relates to, um, um, controlling the, the virus. So I just want to get your opinions on how you're thinking about national information and inform, data that is right in our back doors as it relates to, um, educating the children.
Ms. Ruggles, I think you, I think you made an excellent connection, because when you start talking about the, uh, states that have resorts and beaches and those kinds of things, well, some of the spikes are in areas where people have vacationed, and Hamilton County may not actually be in that category. However, uh, I just wanted to have a conversation, because all three plans have been accepted by the Board. What would it look like in order for us to possibly talk about making a transition that's going to be more comprehensive for students?
And I think what would be helpful is to understand, what does that data look like? And what is the threshold for whether you make a change to go one way or the other? Um, we're, we're, we're virtual, um, right now, so I think that's, you know, the safest bet. But at, what's the threshold that we're going to look at for, um, okay, now we can go to a blended model based on the data? If we're watching the data, what, when, when will the data, at what level does the data tell us that we should consider, um, going to the next level of blended? Because the goal is to get the students. I think we, we all agree that the goal is to get the students back in school, safe and healthy, um, without, you know, putting anybody at risk, be it the teachers or, um, the students. But having three plans, I think that was a smart move to do and to align on how we're going to start. But how do we start to move these plans towards in-person, um, instruction?
Good boy. So one of the things that, uh, I had mentioned before, the Hamilton County ESC actually rents a facility from us, and it is actually Head Start. Head Start is going to, because it is not our program, but Head Start is going to move as scheduled and open their doors to, uh, a Head Start program. What we've agreed to do, um, with the executive chain members is to go and observe that facility and observe the children, as well as the teachers, to find out what kind of precautions they have in place to ensure a safe, um, transition, uh, from being at home to, to coming to school. And I think the longevity of it actually gives us some clarification. How long are they there without an incident or without an issue? I do know that, um, the surrounding districts are really moving towards a. Are we okay?
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah.
The surrounding districts are, most of the surrounding districts in Hamilton County, uh, based on, uh, the conversation, we, uh, the 27 districts in Hamilton County are actually on the telephone with, uh, the CDC Commissioner as well as the, uh, Commissioner for, uh, the Center for Disease Control. We are with them every Friday. And I can tell you, most superintendents were waiting to hear the conversation that we transitioned from red to orange, and many of them were already moving towards a, um, a plan to open school with masks, PPE, all of the essentials, even with the issue being red. Uh, they did not anticipate that we would change the orange, and I'm happy that we did. But at this point, I am not saying that in this five-week period, we should move towards anything, uh, other than orange, but we have to look at the future. Where do we go? And I know Mr. McGowan mentioned that he would like to see the plan transition to yellow. Uh, I think that there are some mathematical facts that Mr. Cooper, Dr. Cooper Letty may have in his toolbox. It says, "What does that really look like and how many, uh, cases per 100,000 would have to be on the table before, uh, you would look at that over a two-week period?"
And I, I like the fact that, um, um, staff is going to see how, um, Head Start is going to move forward, because it's, it's similar to when we looked at bill, the buildings and building new buildings. We looked to see who was doing it, what were some of the best practices, what were some of the things that we, we could do to enhance, um, our vision for our district? And as schools, you know, within that five weeks, you know, I mean, look, it was, what, a week? When, um, the school in Georgia had, you know, those crowded, um, hallways that they were able to see, now they're reporting that the increase of COVID, um, cases in the, in that school. So being able to look at the schools to see who's doing what, um, at the next level, whether it's a blended model, um, and seeing what their data is saying is, I think is important. Set for five weeks, then they know they need to extend it longer. If we're moving to a blended model, then there's, there's certainly going to be some shifts within households and within, um, the org structure of the district that we need to be able to, um, have ongoing communication about.
Madam Vice President, you're correct, because the other part of that, if surrounding districts are opening in a blended model or a full model, and we have our Wenton Woods staying at home because we have our own suspicion of how COVID is going to attract our community by zip code, then we have to be very, very careful, and I am going to give the Board a regular update based on how many students are withdrawing from our district, going to other districts where they could be open enrolled and have a different educational experience.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other comments, um, for discussion for item 3.01? Okay, Superintendent, 3.02?
Yes, 3.02. Uh, as you know, we are actually in a league for the first time in a long time, and there was, there was scheduled to be a league EC2 meeting, the East Cincinnati Conference, and that meeting was canceled because the Ohio High School Athletic Association is trying to figure out a comprehensive plan that, uh, allows young people to participate in athletics, regardless if they're virtual or if they're in school blended or if it's every day. There are some nuances to the plan that, um, are kind of exciting, but I, I'm waiting for them to see, send that to us in print, because I don't want to speculate about it. One of the plans calls for, uh, we are in a 10-league, I mean, a 10-team league. And so you would, of course, play 10 games. What the Ohio High School Athletic Association is proposing is that you only play five games within your own league boundaries, and then everybody goes to the playoffs, and you keep playing if you keep winning. However, there is a part of it that is absolutely unsettling to me that if you lose in the playoffs, you can come back and still resume your league games. That doesn't make sense. Because it's almost like a preseason game for professional athletes. No kid is going to play in that game who runs the risk of going to college, believing, "I'm playing in a game that has no purpose." The other part of it is, um, as much as I believe we are, we should be a part of the Ohio High School Athletic Association, this seems like something that reared this ugly head, uh, Board about money. And letting everybody go into the playoffs actually generates a different level of revenue, because you would have a fan base following a group of people, thinking they're going to go to the state championship. So, um, I'm waiting to get more information from the ECC of how they plan to balance this, because if two or three or four teams decide to not participate in athletics, well, it upsets the balance of the entire league.
Um, and I, and I look at that a different way. Um, I've seen that. I've seen their plan that they talked about from the state, and I look at it this way, that if in fact a kid who is a senior only has the chance to play five games as opposed to paying, playing 10 games, that's half the time he gets to be seen by college recruiters. And if in fact you are a team that plays five games and unfortunately loses your next game, that's only six games you get as opposed to the normal 10. Plus also, what they're saying is that if there's a school that doesn't feel comfortable about even playing in the playoffs, and they're asking you as, or as a school to say, "Do you want to play in the playoff even before you get to that point?" I think what they're doing is now trying to make sure that each school has an opportunity to have nine or 10 games, um, for those seniors or for those people that don't want to necessarily go play in the playoffs.
Well, it would actually be a negative, uh, Mr. McGowan, and I understand your position, where if you played the five games and you went into the playoffs, the other teams would have to agree that once they lost in the playoffs, they would resume their schedule. And when you talk about that senior, that's risky, because what are you actually playing for? You might be playing for exposure, but if you look at the general population of what games people watch, people don't watch games where you're playing two teams that lost. People have their eye more so on what happens in the playoffs. That's what colleges follow. They don't follow the losing season. They follow the progressive season.
Well, I don't necessarily agree with that, and I'm looking at it from a point of view where if you have a school, unlike Wenton Woods, that has a winning record, that's used to winning a lot, you have a school, and I'll use Clark, um, as an example, that does not necessarily have a winning program, those kids are still trying to get seen, and those kids are still being recruited if they're good enough. So if you take away that opportunity for those kids to get seen only in five games, I think that's what the state is trying to avoid. And what, what you're going to run into is, just like you said, there are going to be some schools that are going to say, "I don't want to do it." So this, this whole conversation that we're having and that the state's having might be moot, because people might say, "Hey, after five games, we don't want to play any more games," and there might not be anybody to even want to have a game that doesn't mean anything like you're saying.
Yeah, I, I think the other part, there's, and there's another risk that if you play the five games and you win two in the playoffs, or you win three or four, you've actually increased your likelihood. Uh, and, and we can't stop the likelihood of an injury, but you've increased your likelihood playing in a game where you have kids playing in something. It has, games have to mean something. They have to have a purpose. Uh, and I, I think that when we were, um, playing in a situation, and I am very familiar, because I was here, playing in a situation where there is no league, you weren't playing for a league championship, you weren't playing for a league trophy. Wenton Woods was put in a compromising situation where it was all or none. If we won 10 games, we had to keep moving, because our only goal was to say that we're going to win the championship for the state, which is a really big thing to do. So having a league opportunity, the smaller pieces that get you there and the celebrations that go in between, those are big. But, you know, you can't imagine a group of young people, the only goal that's in front of them, where there won't be any real recognition, is if you win the state championship, and that takes about 14, 15, maybe even 16 games.
Well, I think, you know, as, you know, if you look at, what was it, the, the five big conferences, they're considering not moving forward with their, um, with their programs. And I think it's just all depends on, you know, the data and what, what's coming in, and trying to make the best situation and to create opportunities for students moving forward. You know, the EC, the OHSAA may say one thing this, this, um, week, and then it might be something else. So as it relates to protecting our, our students, we have to make sure that we have a voice at the table to make sure that we are getting them the best, um, opportunity for, um, exposure and for, um, success. And, and you're right, we have, we have been, uh, no, not in a league and not one of the top tiers and, and had to kind of scrap our way there, but we had to find the opportunity. So I think, um, you know, Mr. Smith would keep us abreast on what's happening, um, with that, with any changes and how it affects, um, Wenton Woods City Schools and our students.
Yes, ma'am. Ruggles, that I'd like to, uh, interject. Uh, one of the things that colleges have a luxury of doing things that high schools can't do.
Right.
They can assure a kid, they can give them an extended year, they can do a variety of things. We don't have the luxury based on credits, based on end-of-course exams, based on young people transitioning on. A college could actually enroll a kid 26 years old and let him be a freshman. Once our kids get, become so, get to a certain age, their eligibility actually just kind of falls off. So colleges have a luxury of saying, "We will extend you another year." I can't imagine us trying, or even having the conversation of extending a kid another year so we can participate in athletics. That's absolutely dangerous. I think it's unconstitutional. I think it's unfair, because the kid has worked really, really hard to get his four years in and move on. And I don't know what parent would let the kid stay back. We don't even know what we would do with him. What credit program would we put him in, and what courses would he be taking? Colleges have that luxury, because when you have reached your plateau in a university and you have another year, they actually enroll you into a master's program. So that's the advantage that you have, that we don't have. So I guess the OHSAA is pushing the envelope, saying, "We're going to allow you to play, but what are the consequences for doing it, and what are the attributes to that athlete, as Mr. McGowan mentioned, that needs exposure, that needs to be seen for football, for track, for soccer, for golf, for baseball, and every other sport in between?" And then let's not forget our, um, students that are participating in the fine arts. They need exposure as well. So we have to kind of look at this from a different perspective. What's good for our kids? And how does that exposure help or hurt?
I, I, I think the last thing, um, is that what we can't get away from is, we're talking about exposure. It's a very small percentage of these kids that are going to play college, period. This is their last time to play on a organized team, and the great majority of the people on that football team, on that soccer team, on that basketball team are not going to play in college. This is it for them. And that's where I think Ohio State is looking, um, the, the organization is looking at. Some of these kids, they want, this is their senior year. They want to play as many games as possible. Yeah, they would love to play in college, but the reality is, there's a small percentage that are going to play in college. So what I, when I, the way I look at it is that the more games they can have their senior year, the better, whether or not they're being exposed and whether or not the only people there are really going to be their parents, because we haven't even talked about that. They're talking about maybe having games, but they're talking to only letting parents come to the game. So we, we got to consider that, too.
COVID is still the major factor that's controlling the system. COVID is saying, "We'll, we'll..." COVID is saying, we'll, we'll let you know how many games you get to play. Because some students are not even able to make it through our practice sites. We had our own incident where we had to shut down. We came back up and we haven't had any other incidents. But you know, it only takes two incidents to trigger that there's an outbreak.
How does OHSAA look at schools who have decided to go virtual? Look at that.
Excellent point. One of our neighboring districts that's actually in our league, I, I don't really know how you would actually put this to the test, but their school has given them an option of students can go virtual or they can come face to face. However, if you go virtual, you don't participate in athletics.
I've heard that. I've, I've heard that. So I didn't know what was OHSAA standpoint on if, you know, schools that have gone virtual. So they're pretty much leaving that up to the school districts?
Yes, ma'am. That's a local decision that working with the board and the superintendent has to be made. But that, that's, that's awkward to me.
Yeah, we've always said that athletics is, academics is our priority first. And, you know, athletics is something that is nice for us to have and nice for our students to participate in because it provides a level of opportunities for them for, for, you know, schools or college. And like Mr. McAlwin said, you know, we have, to your point, we have to have a balance in making decisions for our children because there is a small percentage of students that will get that scholarship. But we don't want to put them at risk in trying to go after that opportunity. So we got to make sure whatever it is that we're, you know, I, I get it. I get the exposure. I get the number of games. But we've made a decision that we want to make sure that our students are safe and we're doing a virtual option. So making sure that our decisions about, you know, how we make the decision locally for athletics and exposure is something that we have to make sure that we are consistent with.
Yeah, I would be, I would be, I would, I would want the board to, to tread lightly and think about, we can make a blanket statement. I don't know how fair it is. I don't know how reasonable it is. I don't know what it says to the general public that we are in a virtual situation. However, we're competing in athletics. Because some districts that went virtual, they have already dismissed their athletics. So, and then it's, it's an odd situation to be in, but it goes back to what Mr. McAlwin mentioned. The student, if he's making a decision to go virtual based on his family's decision about safety, but we have a face to face, that's a family decision. However, the family is not deciding about a virtual experience at Wenton Woods City Schools. That is a decision that was made by the board. It has nothing to do, the kid can't make that decision, even if he wanted to go out on the field. That's where I came back and said, we have to kind of look at our position very carefully. Will that increase the likelihood with a petition to the OHSAA that my school is not going to participate in athletics, I would like to get a waiver to transition to another program where they're actually letting me play so I can get the exposure. That's where it's dangerous. Mr. McAlwin, do you, do you see my point with that?
I do. I do. I mean, to be, to be perfectly honest, I'm going to be shocked if we have football at the high school, college, professional level anyway. I just don't see any way they're going to do it. And then the power five are going to be canceling it as soon as tomorrow. So, and I know they say that college is a lot different than the high school level as an example. You know, if we're playing, I'll use Mount Healthy as an example. We're playing another school that's in the same county versus Ohio State having to go to Wisconsin and play somebody in a couple states over. So it is a different scenario. I just know as a, as a coach and an athlete myself, you know, the senior year, it, it, it really, we really shouldn't be looking at it from a point of, from a, from a perspective of, who's going to get a scholarship? Because there's a lot fewer people that are going to be in that situation. A lot of these kids, like I said, this is the last time they'll play in a team type of competitive environment and they'll never forget this. And, you know, if in fact we can do it and we can do it safely, I'm all for it. Just like if we can get everybody back to school and do it safely, obviously we're all for it. It's just a lot of unanswered questions. And unfortunately, the Ohio State Athletic Association is really putting it back on us to make a decision. They're not going to make a decision. They're not going to, I'd be shocked if they tell you you can only play if you are in school. Because that opens them up for liability. So they're going to say, hey, individual school districts, make up your mind, do what you want to do.
Yeah, school, do it. But I'm going to actually, uh, give you some feedback, Mr. McAlwin, that will actually make you smile, sir, today. You mentioned that your senior year, you needed that exposure. Well, if you were the athlete like me, I was recruited my freshman year. I was that good. So maybe I didn't need my senior year because they were already looking at me. So.
You the man, you the man, Mr. Smith. You are the man.
But I, I, I think it's really, I think it's really convoluted where parents don't know what to do. And think about it, if you're in a district like Wenton Woods City Schools and you can play for a powerhouse like Colrain and they're going to actually have football and you know that that's your ticket and you've been recruited and you're going to get a free ride, what do you do? That's awkward.
Right. Well, I also look at it like this, what you just said. The people that are being recruited heavily, they're already being recruited before their senior year. So by their senior year, they've kind of narrowed it down. So the problem, it almost goes back to the middle class always getting stuck because they're not, they don't have enough money to do everything they want to do, but they got more money than they need than, you know, than the government saying, I'll help you. So those are the kids that are kind of going to be left, left behind. And it, it, it's a tough scenario. It is a tough scenario. And as you're having these conversations, if there's anything I can do from a coach's perspective, from a board member's perspective, I'd love to be involved with you and give you, you know, my feedback, but I'm with this board. So whatever, whatever we decide as a board, I'm all for.
Yeah, I think the board made a very, um, um, real aggressive decision several years ago where we have improved our young people making it to the college ranks by increasing our GPA to a 2.5. That was, that was earth shattering. That changed the whole course of everything. So right now, we still have our young people practicing. However, those practice pieces are there to create highlights that we could send to a university because there's been no real interscholastic competition with other districts. And then finally, Mr. McAlwin, you've mentioned about the counties. Well, in the ECC, we play in Claremont County. We play in Butler County. We play in Hamilton County. And it may even be a team in Warren County. So that league is all over the place. It's not a neutral situation where it's the Fairfield and the Princeton and the Fintetown. Those, it, we are all over the place.
Right, right.
Okay, does anybody else have any other points they want to make on this item? If not, Mr. Smith, you have the floor for item 3.03.
Yes, Madam President and Board. This is again just a conversation that I don't know where the board's appetite is as, as opposed to staying in virtual meetings or doing some blended version. And the reason I'm bringing that up is I did, we did our own test case with 20 administrators. So from the executive team to, to principals. And since June, we've actually had face to face meetings at least twice a week with masks, six feet distancing. And I am happy to say that there have been no incidents to, 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 to record. Did we get a lot done? Well, I think we got a lot, a lot done. But what we did just as a safe measure, so we wouldn't have more than 17 to 18 people per room board, we actually let two or three members always be virtual because we didn't want to oversaturate the, the, the environment. So I'm just saying that we have tried it. It works. I'm not sure where the board's position is as opposed to virtual meetings, as opposed to live, as opposed to letting a board member be virtual and three others be live, letting a board, letting, letting it be two and two since Dr. Johnson is away. I just wanted to bring the conversation to the table to see where we are, unless the plan is for us to live in this virtual experience for the duration of a board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. As you know, you all know, a couple weeks ago, I mentioned that I think it would be good for the board to have a conversation about transitioning, especially when we're transitioning back into in-person meetings. However, we can do it safely, much like what we've done with returning to school, bringing staff back on campus to meet. I think it, you know, the reason why I brought that up is because we're asking our staff to do the same. And so I just want to open it up for consideration for us to have some conversation about how we could safely, what's the appetite for the board to go to in-person meetings and how we might do that in a blended model for those who are not comfortable. Dr. Kupuletti, I know you have some hesitation with in-person meetings. So this is our time to chat about it. Floor's open.
Well, I'll, I'll go. I mean, I know I've been kind of talking a lot because I'm the new guy, but. I, I think it is, it's imperative. If we go to a blended scenario with the kids and the teachers, then we absolutely could not keep on doing a Zoom call. The optics would be terrible. So if in fact we get to the point where we're saying the kids are coming in a couple days a week, so they're in a blended scenario, then I think we need to be in a blended scenario also. I just don't think it would look good to tell our kids to come back to school and we're still doing Zoom calls. I just think the optics would, would be bad. Me personally, I don't have a problem with coming in and doing a face to face. We got the six feet distancing, we got the mask. I just went through a replay, we ended up playing 43 games or something. And we did it and we didn't have any issues. We were like the only team that were doing it, but we did it and we got through it. So I, 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 I'm okay with it.
And that tells you that it can be done.
I, I would just add that, you know, Mr. McAlwin, you mentioned that if we ask the children to come back, but we're asking the teachers currently to come back and meet and the, and the administration has been meeting. So it's, it's already happening that we have our staff coming in to have in-person meetings and respecting, using PPEs and social distancing. I think it's worth us having a conversation to see where everyone is at. So, Mr. McAlwin, you are okay with coming in person?
Yep. And I, and I think, you know, I, I, I didn't mean to minimize the staff and the teachers. And I know that they've been coming in. And yeah, I, I think the optics look bad. We have the staff and the teachers coming in. We're not doing it. If somebody doesn't want to do it, I mean, I totally respect that too. So we could have a blended scenario where a couple people still do the Zoom. But because we're having the teachers do it and we're thinking about having the kids do it, I do volunteer to be one of the ones that will come in. Yes.
Sir, Mr. McAlwin and Ms. Brothers, excuse me, but I do have a question for Mr. Birdy. How are, how are you guys doing it at Scarlet? Because you have so many schools that are part of your network.
At, at Great Oaks with the, the board members, the number of board members that we have, it is voluntary. I mean, we have a meeting this Wednesday night and it's going to be, you know, 20 something people will show up in person and 10 people will show up on Zoom. So it, it's what do you want to do? And to, to what Gino said, I, I believe it should be, you know, what's going on with you and your family and your health and, you know, what, what else is going on? So if we're asking teachers to come in and we're asking admin to come in, then we probably should have meetings that are in person. And if someone has a health issue where they can't show up, be it us, teachers, admin, whatever, then they shouldn't be there. So I'm okay with that.
Right. So you're okay, Mr. Birdy, with in-person or you'll let us know?
Absolutely.
Okay. Me too.
And, and I know we still need to hear from Dr. Kupuletti, but I'm looking at CNN and they, they've got now a report that just says the number of US child COVID cases of 90% over the last four weeks.
And I'm, I know Dr. Johnson has expressed what her desire would be and I don't think that she would mind me saying that she may have some trepidation about coming in. So we can certainly make that, that accommodation for her. And, but we, we will probably send out something else to, you know, kind of secure it, what we're going to do. But I'd like to hear from Dr. Kupuletti.
Uh, yes. So, I have cardiovascular disease and I have lung disease. And I am older than everyone else on the board except for Mr. Seymour. I have three months worth of supplies in my house. I have no intent of leaving my house for the next three months on a moving basis. I know that there will, I believe there will be a vaccine coming in the spring. And in the spring, if I've had my vaccination, then I'll change my mind. But otherwise, without a vaccination, I don't see my grandchildren. I don't see my children. And I don't interact with anyone either at 10 feet or even 15 feet. So I would have to say that at the risk of being kicked off the board, I will always be available by Zoom. But I would be so uncomfortable that I would not be useful in the meeting if I showed up.
Thank you for sharing, Mr. Dr. Kupuletti. We, one thing I have to say that I like about this board is that we are very flexible in trying to accommodate the needs of not just board members, but just really try to consider the, the human side of interaction. So we'll definitely take those things into consideration and work with Mr. Smith and the IT team to make sure that we're set up to meet. I don't anticipate Dr. Johnson being back for the next meeting, but I don't know. But I'll definitely keep her abreast on the conversation so she can officially let us know her position on it. So I, I don't want you to feel, and I'm sure you don't, feel any way about not coming in. I think we've all may have had a situation or a family member who have had a chronic condition or any, some type of condition. And I think we're all in a protective state to make sure that everyone is safe and how we interact with each other.
Madam President, I'd like to add, Vice President, excuse me, I just promoted. Madam President, I'd like to add, Vice President, excuse me, I just promoted you. But Madam Vice President, I'd like to add one other piece. I think what Mr. Birdy and I, and I wanted him to give us background because I know their board is large on the Oaks. And I was wondering how they did it with the social distancing in order to create that environment so they could have a very robust conversation. Having Dr. Kupuletti give us his background and his information, I think it's nothing but respect that we should give it because it makes sense. Because at this point, I know he may have made a statement, and I hope he did it in jest, that he would be kicked off the board. Those are not conditions to be kicked off a board because the board can be in a virtual situation like you are now. It could actually be a three-one. And boards are operating like that for right now. And I think, Mr. Birdy, you know the point, you have to kind of judge it based on your own family circumstances.
Yeah.
Where are you and how comfortable are you? And I would hate for somebody to sit in a meeting live and have so much anxiety about it that they're not really there.
Absolutely.
And I hate, you know, I just hate hearing that you have not had a chance to see your kids and your grandkids. And I've got nothing but the utmost respect for you, Dr. Kupuletti. And now knowing that, I'm not going to let you come to a meeting. You know, but no, I just have the utmost respect. And like I said, I know everybody feels the same way. You know, we'll make sure we get you everything you need to still get all the information because we still need your input and your feedback.
Absolutely, absolutely. And just so you know, when this was first starting, when the country was starting to shut down, I reached out to the Ohio School Boards Association to Steve Horton. You know, I was like, Steve, you know, I know that there currently are no provisions for us to meet virtually, but what is the plan? And so the Ohio School Boards Association did send out something saying that schools are able to, they made exceptions for us to be able to meet virtually, which is why we pivoted so quickly to that. But recognizing that the state is not taking a stance on anything, you know, and leaving it up to the districts, this is something that I'm glad we have the flexibility to make that decision. So we will respect your wishes.
Madam President and Board, I would just like to say that if the board is moving into a different direction, we would need to let that information be out there sooner than later so that Mr. Seymour can send out the notice.
Okay. I'll reach out to Dr. Johnson. Speaking of her, I sent her a message today just asking her how she's doing. And she said the surgery went well. And she is not moving around yet, but, you know, she's just taking it one day at a time. So I'll get her the information and let her know. And I feel comfortable in saying that because she shared that she was going to be out for her surgery on air earlier. So if that's it for, is that it for item 3.03, Mr. Smith?
Yes, Madam Vice President, and that's, those are all of my reports.
Okay, so we'll move on to the treasurer's report. Mr. Seymour?
I have a couple things I wanted to share that are brief. I want to share with the board that from the federal government, we did receive elementary and secondary emergency relief funding. The district received $1.2 million and it came through us through our federal grants system. And we have set up a budget to spend it on personal protective equipment and remote learning equipment for our students. And we can also use it for any curriculum materials that are typically not purchased in a remote environment. We also received, and so did all public agencies. The first one was the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Act, which was just schools, K through 12. We also are going to receive the, it's actually being called the coronavirus relief fund that all public agencies receive. And the school district, as part of that funding, which is going to be $225,000, we have not actually received those funds yet. We just got the grant application Friday. And these funds have to be obligated by December 30th of 20, which won't be hard because we are allowed to purchase Chromebooks with these funds. So I just thought I would share with you some of the federal assistance that we have received to react to COVID. The other thing is Friday we received our final rates for the coming year. And our healthcare, we're going to receive a 6.5% rate increase and our dental, a 1.3% rate increase. Winston Woods last year did pay out 114%. We had a 14% overrun. And so this last year, it was a good thing that Winston Woods was in a consortium because that consortium pulled that rate down. What that means is we paid out 14% more than we paid in premium. So to get a 6.5% rate increase after that, it's a good thing that you're in a consortium right now. We also had years where we helped other members of the consortium. So it helps to blend that rate increase. I don't know if you have any questions about that, but that's a pretty good rate increase for this coming year based on our experience and what's happening in the medical area.
Board, are there any comments for discussion on the treasurer's report? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the committee reports.
One more quick thing. If you haven't sent in the auditor questionnaire, please do so.
Sorry.
They've called and asked me to remind you. Thank you. I don't know who has and who hasn't, but they asked me to remind. Thank you. Thanks a lot. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. So the next item on the agenda is the committee reports. Let me just start before we go into the individual reports. And, Mr. McGowan, you kind of prompted this for me when you called me today to ask which committees you were on so that you can kind of understand, you know, thank you for wanting to be active and wanting to figure out how you can contribute more. And I thought it might be good to go over to remind individuals what their committee liaison position is. And then I know a couple work sessions ago, Mr. Smith had shared that he had given us the reports that he had designed for us to fill out our engagements with our committees. And, you know, this is something that we should, I feel that we should be proactive in doing. And I know I have, it's been a lot that's gone on this year. And I know I have not had an opportunity to do some of the things that I've done in the past. But I think we owe it to our superintendent and our treasurer to be present and active and whatever it is that we can contribute to these areas. And in listening to the conversation today, I think it will make sense as we talk about, you know, I know, Mr. McGowan, you said you wanted to get involved in some things. So I'm going to read the committee assignments that were made at our organizational meeting in January. And then I will forward an email to you that will give you the report for, you know, you to fill out for our next meeting. And I think this is good because it tracks accountability and it tracks what we're actually doing. We should be a working board. So, and I'm not sure if Dr. Johnson had already sent it out, but I know that was something that was important for her as well. So as a follow-up to that, here's the list. The Ohio School Boards Association and National School Boards Association Legislative Liaison, that is Dr. Johnson. We, Great Oaks Board of Education is Mr. Birdy through December 31st, '21. The superintendent's review and evaluation, that would be myself and Dr. Johnson. Treasurer review and evaluation is Dr. Johnson and Mr. Birdy. We should probably have a conversation on those two. The municipality representatives for Forest Park is Dr. Johnson. For Green Hills is Dr. Kupuletti and Mr. Birdy. Springfield Township in Wyoming is myself and Mr. McGowan. And let me say, we all understand that we've been going through a lot. But I think it's important that we do touch base with the leadership of our communities to just, you know, stay engaged in what's happening. We have these buildings that's coming up, making sure that they, they don't, making sure that we're doing our part and reaching out to them. And, you know, I know Mayor Johnson reached out for a couple things, but really being able to push him back and say, hey, and I know he actually, not push him back, but I know he actually reached out to Dr. Johnson as well on some issues. But I know Green Hills have stepped up, the chief has been very supportive. But we want to make sure that we are engaging the council members as well. So Public Records Designee, Mr. Seymour. Superintendent Committee Liaisons, which is the Student Achievement, which is myself and Dr. Kupuletti. Wow, and for that one, we've been in Student Achievement Committee since we shut down. So, but we need to start working with Mr. Smith and making sure that we are doing our part as far as being the liaisons. Community Engagement is myself and Mr. McGowan. I know that we have the levy that is coming up and Community Engagement is a key part of that. And I thank Dr. Kupuletti and Mr. McGowan for stepping up to work with Mr. Smith on what the strategy will be. I will still, you know, remain active in that. But I think it is good exposure for our two newest new members to get engaged in that and understand the process and contribute to what the process will be in supporting through the community engagement, well, through the levy committee. And financial advisory, I don't know how I got on this, but this is myself and Mr. Birdy. Policy is Dr. Johnson and Dr. Kupuletti. And this is important to the conversation we had tonight. Athletic and Performing Arts is Dr. Johnson and Mr. McGowan. So there you are, Mr. McGowan. And then the Ohio School Boards Association Urban School District Advisory Liaison is myself. OSBA Salt Liaison is Dr. Johnson. And the board handbook, we need to convene and update that. I know, Dr. Kupuletti, you were, I think, working on a draft with Dr. Johnson. But, you know, the way that things have, you know, unfolded, we haven't had a chance to go back through that. But much like what the district leadership has had to do and the teachers have had to do, we can't, you know, we got to move past the fact that we've had COVID and we got to get active in doing some things. Mr. Smith, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Yes, Madam Vice President, I just want to stress to the board that the three committees that you mentioned are actually superintendent's committees that the board sits on.
Right.
To committee, Student Achievement Committee, and Community Engagement Committee. The ones that the board actually moves in their own direction is their own political jurisdiction of the three communities.
And I think maybe because I was just rattling them off and I read it quickly, it does outline that the superintendent's committee liaisons, Student Achievement, Community Engagement, and Financial Advisory. And when I send this out, and thank you, Mr. Seymour, for forwarding this for tonight's meeting. I appreciate you. We, I will send this out to the board members so that if you have questions. And one thing that I did not do is the way that we have it set up is the person who's first on the, you know, if it's two people, the person who's first is the main person. The second person is, you know, as a backup. So now that we have an opportunity to look at these, when you have an opportunity to look at these, you can work with the person if you have an interest to take something on. You know, just work with your co-chair to figure out how you want to move forward.
Mrs. Ruggles, I was trying, and I know you're going to send all this stuff out, but I was trying to write real fast. And I think that you said on the community engagement, you said it was Katrina and me, right? And then municipality, was that me and you or was that Katrina and me also?
That's, well, that's both you and I, when, if there's a meeting that's set up. And because you're so new, Gino, I will take it on in setting up some things and invite you to come along with it.
Sure, okay.
Hopes that, you know, next time around, you'll jump in and you, you know, you can lead it. But because it's new to you, you are a co-chair on a lot of these. And what, and like I shared with you earlier, you know, this is our opportunity to help you understand how the flow of the board goes for meetings, for getting information back to the superintendent before meetings, as well as the committee. It's time for us to do our part in making sure that you're up on the responsibilities as a board member.
And I know on the Athletic and Performing Arts, I think you had me listed first, which is totally fine. And I know it's Dr. Johnson and with her being.
It's actually the other way.
It's the other way around. Okay, good.
Yeah.
I mean, not good, but, but you get it. And I'll do whatever I need to do. So maybe in her absence, if there's anything that needs to be done, maybe you or another board member can just let me know what I need to do.
Madam Vice President, I want to interject. Those committees that Mr. McGowan just spoke about, athletics and performing arts, those are created under student, community engagement, which is still part of the superintendent's committees. The board sits on those committees. They don't chair them.
Yeah, and, and, Mr. Smith, maybe you and I can look at this list and make sure that it is clear so that before I send this out, everyone understands what is the superintendent's committee, what are breakouts of the superintendent's committee, and it might be good to separate.
Yeah, I didn't. I don't want the board members to think that this was some kind of overbearing situation where we're expecting them to come up with the agendas and put the thing in motion because a lot of it has to do with interaction between the Teaching and Learning Department that actually has impugned our work with the Technology Department. That's our work with the Boosters Department. So it's not that the board, we wanted the board to be there to make sure they understood which direction the district was going in so they wouldn't get information secondhand. But as far as their workload is concerned, they're not obligated to run the meetings. They're there to help support the work.
Right. So for instance, Mr. McGowan, when I would go to the Student Achievement meetings, I would, you know, just, I'll find out what's happening within the district. And a lot of the things with the Student Achievement, Mr. Smith already covers. But from a board standpoint, I might have some comments when we get into the committee meetings to, for board members to consider.
That makes sense. And also, I appreciate Mr. Smith saying that a lot of this stuff would be kind of. That, that makes sense. And, and also I appreciate Mr. Smith's saying that a lot of this stuff would be kind of led or coming from the superintendent's office, which makes sense because he was recruited when he was a freshman and I didn't start getting recruited until my junior senior year. So I expect to be following him anyway. So thank you.
Got him, got him. Good, good one, good one. Touche, touche.
But did you see how long it took him to prepare that?
He was waiting. He was waiting.
I was waiting for my chance. And thank you for getting me this because I felt like, yeah, I knew I was on some committees, but I had no idea which ones they were. So now I will get my folder and start getting really involved in it. So thank you.
On Student Achievement, Dr. Cupoletti has given us some incredible feedback about looking at curriculum and assessments in a, in a variety of ways to make sure that we have all of the lenses and everybody's lenses on how do we get our kids to the next level. So I would just wanted to just put that part in there. It's important.
Excellent, excellent. I think, you know, we're, we're coming out of shell shock and it's time for us to get back to work. So, and I mean, unprecedented times, you can only hold on to that for so long. I think we've worn that out. We gotta, we gotta start turning, transitioning back into some level of normalcy and how we operate.
Yeah, Ms. Ruggles, I would like to, as early as tomorrow, especially if, if schools have made their definitives. I know that some schools are going to open on the seventeenth and some on the twenty-fourth. But I am going to give the board a list of schools in our community, actually in Hamilton County, and what they're actually doing virtual versus blended versus face-to-face.
That would be good. That, oh, sorry. That would be good information. And I guess one of the things I wanted to know, and I guess this, I don't remember all of the schools that's in the ECE, but it might be good if you highlight, like put a little asterisk that they're in our league. So we, we can kind of look at what's happening on that level as well.
Yes, ma'am. I will do that.
Okay.
Ms. Ruggles.
Yes.
Before you go to executive session or ask about it, there's one document that was sent to us by Jeanette on August sixth entitled fostering safety and confidence. And we were supposed to discuss it this evening and I don't see it on our agenda. Just to let you know, maybe you wish to push it forward to the next meeting.
Yeah. And you know, and, you know, the way that this time with the agenda, with Dr. Johnson going out and you know, the push to get the board to share whether or not they had an appetite to talk about that was, would have been a good time to put that in on the agenda. But I'm certainly, I'm, I'll yield to Mr. Smith that we can have that discussion. Is that what you'd like to do, Dr. Cupoletti? You want to move forward? I know Dr. Smith, I mean, Mr. Smith wanted us to discuss it, but I think he just was trying to make sure that we, we hit some of the hot topics.
I, I was only pointing out that we were supposed to discuss it. I don't care whether we discuss it now or next meeting or at all. So it's up to everyone else.
Mr. Smith?
I, I would like to, so that people were adequately prepared, Dr. Cupoletti, I would like to move it to the next meeting if that's okay, sir.
It's fine with me. Just pointing out, pointing out something I saw.
Okay.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, let me find my agenda now. Okay, so given that we're on the committee reports, Mr. Birdie, is there anything from the Financial Advisory Committee?
No, other than Randy and I had talked and, you know, I think we need to continue with the concern about operating expenses and look at the percent cap on what we're doing going forward and continuing to do that. So other than that, I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. As I mentioned before, the Student Achievement Committee, we've been in Student Achievement for some time now, discussing how we're going to get back into school so that students can achieve. Mr. Smith, would you like to add anything or Dr. Cupoletti?
You can go first.
I have nothing to add. Again, please let me know the next time there's going to be a meeting.
Yes, Dr. Cupoletti, what we will do, based on information that you gave us, we will always make sure that there is a new meeting that you can attend to make sure that you're there and present. If that's okay.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd, I'd like to be able to contribute.
Okay. The only thing that I'd like the board to consider is I am going to start sending you information. I'm going to get a running tab from the Enrollment Center to let you know if there's been any movement with increased or decreased enrollment in the district.
Okay, thank you. Community Engagement, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, we actually had a incredible convocation today. One of the things that I'd like to say, the virtual experience is pretty interesting because we had taped it last week in a virtual experience. However, the scanned disc that we were using was corrupt. And so everything was wiped out. Everything was lost. And so we had to bring people live and it was just the people that were presenting. So it was actually eight people and then those people sat in the audience. We kept our social distancing and we were able to give an overview to all the staff about what our plans are for the future. And we're actually calling it the Convocation Playbook 2020.
And you, you had how many people logged in on that today?
I believe it was like four hundred and twenty-one people.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah. I tried to get on, but I, I missed it.
But we were happy if it was four hundred and twenty-two, but that's okay.
But, and so the board understands that we did have a presence there. Dr. Johnson was asked to do a video and I was asked to do a video as well. And that information welcoming the staff back was part of being wiped out. So, but Mr. Smith covered us.
Yeah, I gave a full version about each board member, their background when they had afros enrolled in convertibles on the back of cars and homecoming parade. So I was able to give that information clearly, Mr. McGowan.
Well, then there's that. Then there's that. So, um, political jurisdiction, I know that Dr. Johnson did meet with the Forest Park, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, the Forest Park Financial Committee, where she gave a overview of the mascot about the buildings being on target and on time and on schedule, about the upcoming levy, as well as the virtual, the blended and the face-to-face. So that the Forest Park Committee understood that we were already moving things in, in this direction. So she gave a synopsis of where we are and I believe she is planning on doing it on a regular basis. I don't know when the next committee meeting comes up.
Okay, Green Hills. I lost my committee assignments. Either Mr. Birdie or Mr. Dr. Cupoletti?
We have had no outreach from them. I keep in pretty close contact with the mayor since he lives across the street and with the police chief. And one of the council members lives next door. So I, I will keep asking them, letting them know that I'm here.
I know that Mr. Dr. Cupoletti, Mr. Birdie, I know was aware of the Green Hills talking about creating a roundabout. I don't know where at this point, but that's something that they believe would, would actually make it very convenient in that particular sector where the school is. So we'll still reach out to the mayor and find out exactly what their appetite is for that.
I've had discussions with the mayor about that. And the problem, there are two people who are very angry and threatening all kinds of violence and things like that. So I, I, I think it will, this is Green Hills, don't forget. So I, I think that they're working on it.
And it's not me.
I know. I'm like, I didn't say it.
It's not me. Hey, Dr. Cupoletti, you need to let me know who those people are and I, maybe I can go talk to them.
The, the position that Mr. Birdie was in.
Don't call him out.
But he gave an overview that it's actually, it will actually make the blow up traffic better. But I don't really know what the opposition is, other than people want to be opposed because they can't.
The, the problem is the one resident will find it difficult to back his pickup truck into his driveway.
Okay.
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 Okay. All right. That brings us to the close of the committee reports. And next item is six point zero one, which is an executive session. And there is no need for an executive session. So that brings us to item seven point zero one, adjournment. Unless there's anything else that any other board members would want to share, Mr. Smith or Mr. Seymour? Going once, going twice?
I'm just happy that the entire staff was present today. And we're looking forward to making the virtual experience a great one and moving forward with other opportunities when they become available.
And welcome back, staff, and welcome back, Winston Woods. Teachers and staff, those who are just coming back. So welcome back. We're looking forward to great things this year despite our challenges. So that brings us to the, the close of our work session, Winston Woods Board of Education Work Session on August tenth, twenty twenty. So we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.